To the Tuesday, August sixth, twenty twenty four, school committee meeting here at Tingsborough High School P D C. My name's Anthony Tannarali. Officially call this meeting to order. At this time, we will start with introductions.
Evan Cody.
Beth Bushman.
Becky Stanton.
Mike Woodlock, Assistant Superintendent. Hi, I'm Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Ryan McMahon.
Stacy Guido.
Rob Mullen.
Good evening, Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
Thank you, everyone. If you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Hope you're all having a great summer. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes, and we're going to do each one of these individually. So the school committee minutes from June eleventh, twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That carries six zero zero. The executive session minutes from June eleventh, twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Second.
Second? Aye. Are those, those will not be released at this time?
Correct.
They will not be released at this time. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Abstained.
Abstained? So five zero one. And the June seventeenth, twenty twenty four Negotiation Subcommittee Executive Session Minutes also not to be released at this time.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
That carries five zero one. Thank you, everyone. Citizens time. See none. Correspondence, Dr. Flanagan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are three items under your correspondence tonight. Two of them relate to the same topic, which is the national assessment of educational progress. Tingsborough has been selected for testing, but Mr. Woodlock will talk more about that when we get to the teaching and learning component of our presentation tonight. The other piece of news I received is from N I S C, and many of you who've been around a while are familiar with the N I S C accreditation process, which we've not gone through in a long time. So Mr. Woodlock can provide just a snippet or overview of that. That would be beneficial.
Sure. So this letter dated August first. Mr. Ogden, High School Principal, received it from N I S C identifying when our decennial visit will take place. I know some of us have been around long enough that we've been through these visits before, and usually they are kind of met with, well, this is exciting, but it's also going to be very costly and, you know, mess up our entire school for a week kind of thing. The good news is N I S C has changed the way they do things. So we've received note, we're going to have a decennial visit in November-ish of two thousand twenty seven, which again, that's three years away. But they do it a little bit differently now. They have what they call a collaborative conference visit two years before the decennial visit, where they'll have a small group come, and that's going to happen in November of two thousand twenty five, so about a year away. And in that meantime, the high school administration and the staff will conduct a self-study based on the N I S C elements, rate themselves accordingly, identify areas for growth, areas of excellence, and they will share this report with the collaborative conference attendees prior to them coming. They'll come for a couple of days. They'll assess, you know, where we are in terms of, you know, their interpretation relative to our self-study, and then give us feedback to work on for the two years in between the collaborative conference and our official decennial visit, which again, is not nearly as intrusive or as expensive as it used to be. So that's the really good news here. So it's a lot of work for the high school staff and the administration, but it really is useful and keeps us definitely on par and gives us an idea about, you know, where we are relative to the N I S standings, which I can promise you, we're working towards all of those things already. So we're not necessarily focused specifically because they're N I S standards, but the things that we're doing are definitely in line with what N I S would want us to be doing. So I feel really comfortable and confident about that. I'm sure Mr. Ogden and his staff will be sharing updates, you know, throughout the next year or two or three about this, but this is the official notification of when we're going to begin the process. Having gone through it, be happy to answer any questions if you have it. Do my best to answer them.
Yeah, I think that's actually the beneficial component. Mr. Woodlock recently went through this as the principal of Groton Municipal Regional High School a few years back, so he's quite familiar with the process and the expectations. So we have kind of that insider knowledge, which is great.
Yeah, having run one here at Tingsborough High School, the old way, and then being a part of a visiting team at Hamilton Wenham, and then hosting at Groton Municipal, it's, it's a lot better. They've really done a nice job of listening to feedback and concerns that, that schools and districts have had and refining the process. So it's, it's a little bit more user-friendly.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Woodlock.
Pleasure.
Personnel?
Lots of personnel, as you can imagine, being in August. So notification of new hires. We'd like to welcome Colby Ethier as a T E S Power Professional, Cody Face as a T M S Special Education Teacher, Josh Gray, T E S Power Professional, Rachel Leo. Yes, that Rachel Leo coming back again for T E S Power Professionals. She loves it here. Kendra Milne, T M S Power Professional, Caitlin Moran, T E S Special Education Teacher, and Kellen Saints, T E S Power Professional. We also have some resignations, Mr. Chair. Haley Denisovich, T E S Power Professional, Mary Ann Field, T E S Para, Jacob Hardy, T E S, T M S Para, Jessica Kelly, T E S Para, Kayla O'Shea, our school psychologist from Norris Road, Tara Pelletier, T M S Para, and Diana Rogia, T E S Special Education Teacher. So thank you to all those people for their collective years of service to the students of Tingsborough.
Yes.
That is where we stand at this time. I will just say for, for the committee's input, we do have a few job postings currently out there. We are hiring a special education teacher at the middle school, special education teacher at the elementary school, as well as two power professionals at both the middle school and elementary school. So that's what we have for openings at this time. All those jobs are posted. We're actively recruiting candidates and going through the interview process there. So we're doing the best we can to fill those. So that's where we are from my overview of staffing standpoint.
Aye, thank you. Share the success. Mr. Cody.
Sure. The elementary school P T O will host a summer popsicle playdate for new and returning preschool and kindergarten families on Thursday, August twenty second at ten a.m. on the playground. Families can begin dropping off school supplies the week of August twelfth between eight and four, with the supply list available in the back-to-school guide, on social media, and on the website. Families are encouraged to review recent updates from Principal Kavanaugh. At the middle school, exciting developments are underway with the new building and principal. T M S met with incoming sixth graders twice in the spring and have another tour day for new students on August twenty first from nine to eleven. Fall sports are about to start, and Mr. Maringer is working with staff to finalize student schedules while familiarizing himself with the district. At the high school, freshman and newcomer orientation is scheduled for Wednesday, August twenty first from ten to eleven thirty, with freshmen encouraged to meet with the senior sidekicks. Fall sports begin on Friday, August sixteenth, and Monday, August nineteenth, depending on the sport, and students with questions should contact the athletic department or coaches. Students looking to purchase a parking permit should have received an email today to complete registration and payment. We look forward to students returning on Tuesday, August twenty seventh, for a great year.
Perfect. Thank you. And that was your first, first run at this, huh?
Second now.
Oh, second?
Yeah.
Did I miss one? July.
June.
But June's where were you? I don't know. I'm getting old.
Week after graduation. It's been a while. It's been a good summer.
It's been a good summer, yes. Subcommittee update.
So, Mr. Chair, just following the, the kind of the schedule of what we've done in the past, we'll have a superintendent evaluation Subcommittee meeting on August twentieth, where at that meeting I'll present my goals to the Subcommittee and bring them to the full committee. Everyone will have some time to review that, and we can approve my goals at the first meeting in September. And I would like to bring back the policy Subcommittee meeting for a meeting in September, early September, to update some of our policies. There is some new Title IX legislation that's out there that we have to have a conversation about, and we do have some policies that have been adopted on the town side that I think we should have a conversation about on the school side as well. And I know that Mr. Piper, I believe that Mr. Piper also wants to look at potentially modifying one of our technology policies going forward. So I think it's important that we get the policy Subcommittee up and running for a September tenth meeting. That being said, later on in the agenda, we'll talk about what the Subcommittee's potential assignments are. So that's what we have with that.
Thank you. Unfinished business? M S B A update?
So we'll jump into the slide deck at this point. Just a reminder of upcoming meetings. August twentieth, we have our, our next school committee meeting. The following night, we have a school building committee meeting, and then school committee on the tenth and twenty fourth of September, as well as school building committee on the eighteenth. As most know, we, we have not settled the contract yet, so we will have to look at potential dates for negotiations at some point as well as we kind of get back into the school year. So this calendar will quickly fill up. So as much time as we've cut off to enjoy, it's getting hectic. Important dates for families to remember, just kind of for the community at large. August twelfth and thirteenth will be our administrative retreat. That's actually a great opportunity for all administrators of the district to come together, and we spent two whole days on the elementary school cafeteria, really talking about what our goals are, what our plans are, and really calibrating where we are as a district. That's when we spend a lot of time focusing on our strategy for district improvement and how we can meet the needs of all learners and making sure that our, our, our vision is aligned to our expectations in the classroom and our goal development. So that will be the bulk of the administrative retreat. Generally after that, Mr. Woodlock will provide kind of a summary of that at our August twentieth meeting, so the committee is well-informed as to what was expected as well. Mr. Messina will reach out to D. Bus, and we hope to have Bus groups published at some point the week of August nineteenth. New staff orientations, all, all new teachers hired to the district, and I think right now we're about five or six. We'll be coming on August twenty first, kind of to a, a welcome to Tingsborough kind of meeting, and they get to, they get their hands on their laptop, they kind of understand who we are, what we're about, introduction to our expectations, M T S S, U D L L, as well as our strategy for district improvement. First day for staff, August twenty sixth. First day for students in grades one through twelve, August twenty seventh. First day for students in kindergarten is August twenty eighth. I want to clarify that. August twenty seventh is also orientation for kindergarten, but it's not a full first day. Their true first day is August twenty eighth. So they'll hear separately about what orientation will look like on the twenty seventh. And then, of course, after we come back to school, and as you recall, it's a longer Labor Day weekend this year because of the election day on September third, we will come back on that Wednesday, September fourth, and that'll be the first day for preschool students. So that is the calendar that is before us, and I, I just know that it's going to feel like a whirlwind over the next couple of weeks, but it'll all come and we'll be ready. So all exciting. So as we go to the next update, M S B A works. So for those of you who have been on campus in a while, it looks a heck of a lot different. All of the underground systems have been installed and tied in. Drainage, gas, water, telecom. If you were here two weeks ago, you would have seen the parking lot in front of the current middle school was a thirty-foot hole as they put the drainage system in, and they were running lines, and there were excavators everywhere. Today, we, we had the opportunity of watching them put the binder down the final road, the final, the temporary road until we finalized things. So it's really exciting watching it come move forward. Masonry is about ninety-nine percent complete. They left two sections open that I'll show you in a little bit in a picture that they've since closed up, and those were primarily the classroom neighborhoods that were upstairs. They did not finalize the mason, mason work there because they were using those as secondary, second-floor load stations for cranes and things like that. Now they put the mason there, put the windows there, and they're going to use the hallways at the end, or the stairwells at the end of each corridor. Roofing's a hundred percent complete, and the binder work will begin. We will have a temporary binder running in front of the current middle school for now. We will have the granite curbing with cement essentially from where the new building begins all the way down to the high school for the beginning of the year. It will be temporary binder in front of the middle school because of the demo that will happen there, and they want to protect it. So that is kind of the M S B A update. If you go to the next one, that's on the exterior. On the interior, it's amazing. Mike and I had the opportunity to go in last Friday just to see the, the, the work that they're doing, and it's, it's like an orchestra. They just seem to follow each other. The second floor of A building looks entirely different than C building, or the first floor of C building, or even B building at this point. So if you're on the second floor of A building, which is the closest building to the high school, paint's on the walls, the windows are in, the ceiling grids are up, all the ductwork's in. You can see the cutouts for where the, the screens will go and the monitors. They're really flying along. They're doing a great job. So they're comfortable and confident with their schedule. I don't need to read every bullet to you, but you can see that work is taking place. Within the next few weeks, mill work will start to go into the classrooms. So our cabinets, our counters, window sills, all of that. You'll also see that the main entrance and the real glass area that looks out to the courtyard from the cafeteria, that real main common area, those will be tented until October. So it takes time. They have to fabricate, they have to come out, take site, take measurements on site, and then go back to the factory and spec out all the frameworks and the glass and things like that. So they're going to tent that with white, essentially that white tuff they've been using to kind of get the humidity out of the school so that the mill work that is being installed is protected. So the main entrance in that cafeteria will have that for, for the next couple of weeks until October. But things are on track. They're on progress, and I'm just really excited about it. It's great walking around it. So we've got some pictures, construction pictures. That's a view that not a lot of people have seen. The picture on the left, that's actually outside the construction trailer, looking at the back of the school. You can see all the brickwork is complete. The picture on the right is from the second story. That's going to be the, the window that looks into the courtyard. And basically what I'm showing there is the scaffolding, and again, that used to be the load area for the second floor. That is since gone at this point, and it's all brick at this point. So they closed that all up. So that, they're making progress there. Interior-wise, on the left, it's really hard to see, but I'm trying to show the white tenting over the main entrance that we're going to see and all the soffit work that's being done. And on the right side, that's a classroom from upstairs, A building, and you can see the ceiling grid in, and you can actually see, I don't know if you can see all well in the picture, but where the light, light fixtures will be in each of the classrooms. But it's, it's truly impressive to see the, the windows in and the size of the rooms, and it's just, it's magnificent. So they've done a great job. So that's where we are with M S B A. Happy to answer any questions if I can.
If we could schedule another tour at some point for, for this group, I think it'd be cool. We haven't been in there a long time.
What, what are we thinking?
Should we do it before our next meeting?
August twentieth?
Yeah. Is that too soon, or?
It's tied up to, they'll make anything happen. It'll work for us.
Work for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
All right, August twentieth.
Hope we meet at six thirty?
Yep.
And we'll do that?
I will, I will.
Well, we have a Subcommittee meeting before that.
We do.
Subcommittee could meet at six? We'll do the tour at six thirty?
I'm just wondering if we're better off, if, I don't know what the availability of people in this room is, if we can do it on the twenty first, because the school building committee meets on the twenty first, and just do school building and school committee at one meeting. Since there's several of you on both committees.
Yep.
Yeah.
So why don't I see if we can get in the twenty first around six o'clock or five forty-five or something, do a tour there with both committees, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, because six of us are on that other committee anyway.
Right, right. Okay. Uh, yeah, morning. So those, that's the M S B A update. No other questions there. So, Mr. Chair, based on feedback I received, the committee members did the best I could to balance it based on everyone's wants and desires and needs for Subcommittee. Not that we have a whole lot of wants, desires, and our needs for Subcommittee, but um, some of them, obviously, as we've talked about, are more timely and, and, and more exhaustive than other ones, but I tried to just divvy up the, the responsibilities equitably. So based on the information I received from the committee members, I would suggest these be the Subcommittee's for this coming school year. I'm happy to answer any questions about that if someone has any.
Is everyone good with the committees they've been appointed to?
Yes.
Yes, I think it looks good.
And do we have to vote on your committees, like Valley Corporatives separately, or are we just going to include it?
We're already voting on that one because we had to sign off on that.
On that, okay. All right. All right, if everyone's good with the choices that they have been awarded, I will seek a motion to approve the Subcommittee assignments.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That carries.
We'll move on to teaching and learning now.
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. As Dr. Flanagan mentioned, we've been selected for N A T testing, and if you don't know what that is, you shouldn't be surprised. It's kind of a, I don't, I don't know how they do the selection, honestly, if it's random or they seek out specific communities with different demographics or what have you, but the hope is this is not going to be overly intrusive. This is just for our T H S students, grade twelve in mathematics. They've given us a range of days between January and March. They, they will come back to us in the fall and let us know specifically. It's meant to be about three or four hours. We are not responsible for preparing students for the test, any, I mean, outside of just teaching them the math standards as we typically would. We're not responsible for administering the test. It really is just like one more testing period, which can be really frustrating to our teachers and students and parents, but it's a really important thing for the country as a whole to, you know, gather information and data to make decisions about education. So we just happen to be part of it this year. There are different grade levels that are part of it. Our middle school's participated in the past. Everyone participates at some point. It just happens to be our turn. So I'm sure we'll be getting more information on this, and when we do, we will update the committee.
Perfect. Thank you.
The second piece is just a little bit of good news. There's a lot of data that will be coming out from the state in the next couple of months, including M C A S data and so forth, but last spring, we talked about a concern that we were having with absenteeism as we've identified. Our chronic absenteeism numbers were really high, twenty-three point eight percent as of March twenty twenty-three. Good news. We got some data back. As of March twenty twenty-four, we went from twenty-three point six percent chronic absenteeism to thirteen point nine percent. So I just like to thank the, the committee for allowing us to have, you know, deep discussions about that, encourage all parents to really focus on absenteeism and get kids into school. It's the most important thing we can do. And most importantly, thank the administrators in our school for working hard to make, get that message out, to reach out to families, encourage people to make sure their children are coming to school, unless, of course, they're actually sick or there's something important to keep them out of school, but really just push, like, school's the place we need them to be. That's the best thing we can do for any of the data that we look at as far as testing or anything like that. Just having kids in school is going to have better results for students in general. So really good and optimistic news there. We don't have any specifics as far as the breakdown of what we shared with you in the spring yet, but I'm sure we'll get that, and hopefully this number continues to trend in this direction. So just to follow up from what we had talked about in the spring.
Do you have any insight onto how we got such a significant increase? Or decrease, I guess?
I, I know that the administrations at each school have put a lot of time and effort into making sure that they got that out and all, you've probably seen in the newsletters, make sure that we specifically reached out to parents when students were, you know, chronically or trending towards chronic absenteeism and, and really, I won't say doubling, but really significantly increasing our efforts for communication with families that, you know, for one reason, another, the students were out quite a bit. Sometimes that's really valid and appropriate, and sometimes, like all of us, we just need to nudge and say, like, we noticed, we're worried. We're concerned. We want to make sure we're doing the best for your kids.
And we actually lowered the thresholds too when we'd send out those trigger letters, so people knew it was kind of on our radar. So did a great job with that.
I think just awareness and effort. And it's nice to see it paid off.
Was there one school that was worse than others, or an age group?
The elementary school definitely struggled a bit, and the high school, especially from March on, you know, typically. And that's probably not going to improve a whole lot just by the nature of senioritis and those types of things. But yeah, I think specifically some of those identified high-risk subgroups that typically have struggled, sometimes it's because of attendance. So, you know, it, it really, I think, is really just being aware and then making sure we focus to, to improve it. So I should say too, just to be fair, you know, one data figure doesn't mean we fixed this. You know, we need, we need to continue to work on this to, you know, as soon as I sent it to Mrs. Kavanaugh at the elementary school, she's gave me, you know, I texted her and she said, woo-hoo, next year, single digits. So, you know, that's the kind of effort that we need. That's, with anything that we do that we feel is important, it can't be like we, we saw something we liked and now we don't have to worry about it anymore. We have to continue to focus on it. So.
What's considered a good number?
Um, you know, in talking to some colleagues and talking to Mr. Maringer, our new principal, we were talking about it, and he said, you know, in Arlington, we always scored pretty high, you know, pretty high on that category for accountability because we were like just under ten percent. So, you know, I'd, I'd say that's probably a good place to be. You know, ideally, I'd love to be somewhere near five percent, but I think if we just keep getting better, I'll be pretty happy with that. Ten percent's a huge jump. So it's a good start.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just realized right now that I put my slide in the wrong place, which is throwing the numbers off. So that's on me.
Yeah, we're, we're going to move right down to finance. I was looking for it up there.
I forgot.
No, that's, Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So tonight, five warrants were presented to the committee. I do have them back approved. And as always, in your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts. Also in your drive, Mr. Mullen, as your single signer, was a very busy man since your last meeting. So we have in the drive- So we have in the drive the warrants that he signed on July 23rd, on July 9th for fiscal '25. Also on July 9th, he finalized the fiscal year '24 warrants, and he did come in on June 25th and signed warrants for your committee. For signing of payroll tonight, both in the drive are the lists, lists of the last two payrolls of fiscal '24, which was the payroll dated June 17th, as well as payroll dated July 1st. And that July 1st pay date also had an FY '25 component. And also for FY '25 are the paydates of July 15th and July 29th. And that'll do it for signing of payroll.
Thank you very much, Mr. Messina. School Committee Discussion. Evan? You all set? Fair?
Just want to say I hope the students as well as staff have had a great summer. Thank you to the staff who are leaving, and thank you for your service. And welcome to those that are coming as new hires or returnees. And I think the months are going to start ticking off very fast before the middle school opens. You know, there's something to look forward to this year. Thank you.
I've done it this time?
Nothing. Thank you.
All set? Thank you.
Amazingly, I have nothing this evening. Wow.
Nothing at this time?
I'm shocked that we're only three weeks away from school. I'm not okay with it, but it's been an amazing summer. I hope it finishes just as strong as it started, and enjoy the last three weeks.
Yeah, looking forward to the next couple of weeks. The campus starts to pick up a little bit. Kids start showing up a little bit more and checking on their schedules and registrations and things like that, so it's getting exciting. So we're getting close. Looking forward to it, and I just hope everyone enjoys the next couple of weeks.
I just realized, this is the first time in 25 years I will not have a student in Tingsborough Public Schools. Getting old. Yeah, I, I am old. Executive Session, we do have a need for it. Be patient while I read this because we have a need for two separate discussions. One to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, and to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body as declared by the chair. We will return from Executive Session only to adjourn our regular session meeting. This action does require a roll call vote.
In favor?
In favor?
Have to make the motion? I'll make the motion?
I'll second. In favor?
In favor?
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
Thank you all, and have a good night.
Thank you.